To the United States of America and to the Republic in which stands law, action, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call me?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pilon, Councilmember Ringo.
President.
Councilmember Alders.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Flattow.
Here.
City Mayor Stockman.
Here.
Prosecuting attorney Blazer.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Johnson.
Here.
And your city administrator, President Rollcall, completed, sir.
You have any uh thing different on the agenda that we were presented? Corrections amendments?
Mayor. Councilmember Bryant.
I'm going to approve the agenda as presented.
Second that issued by Councilmember Bryant, second by Mayor Pilon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, so uh we have six items here that uh. Our advocacy Sam.
Yes.
Mr. Point.
Absolutely.
That Sam has presented that he would like to have a conversation with the council on. Uh we talked briefly before and I've asked Councilmember Alders to to jot down action items, he's very good at summarizing things and he's done a great job forcing the pass that way. Um so I'm going to ask Sam to present his uh conversation. But I've also indicated that ever along if I see fit as presiding officer, I will manage the meeting, there's an opportunity for the council that wants to ask for clarification or bring up a point, certainly get my attention and we'll go there. Um Sam, as I said, if there's something that that I think is appropriate for somebody else on staff to weigh in on at that time rather than wait all the way to the end, we'll do that as well. So we'll try and keep the the meeting moving. Um but obviously we want to hear Sam out and try and get to some conclusion about it or beneficial action. But before we start anything that the council office. And we'll wait for staff until appropriate time. So Sam, if you could speak at the podium.
Sure.
Catch you out here. So maybe that we are recording.
Yes.
Uh good afternoon, council and your mayor. I have a couple of questions basically. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I wanted, one of the big questions I had was how is a resident, the city of Mountain, able to actually have a conversation with the city council? I understand that we have the floor item portion um of the city council meeting and that allows for residents to come up and and you have a three minute time span of pitching what you want to talk about, you don't really get a lot of interaction, questions back and forth to the council. So before today, actually, I'm sorry, before that last city council meeting that I was at on the twelfth, I didn't know anything about a uh request for council action because it's never been told to me before, I didn't know that that's how it works, so I would just like your input as the council of how you'd like to direct residents to have a conversation with it without using the floor item expansion. It's not really intended for that.
Yeah, I will say in our ladies council member address that they so choose. Um my experience in the past fifteen years is that when a resident wants to get the council attention, they generally call council.
Sure.
Um we've had some, it's said in the past where um multiple council members will be called, uh sometimes all council members, sometimes one or two council members, and if it has to do with something related to a complaint or a question of staff, we generally go there first. If there needs to be something brought up.
You go to staff first, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um if there's something that needs to be brought up, uh either administrator will bring it up in his regular updates to the council or we'll bring it up as an action item. Uh to the council typically, the complaints have been brought to my attention or the request for help, because sometimes residents are saying, I'm trying to get through the red tape with the council, with the city. And so sometimes it can help get through the red tape, sometimes it's a complaint. And typically the complaints are handled by staff without further need to um follow up. And then the action item will be communicated to the staff or to the council by the staff.
When you say complaint, you mean somebody, a resident would have a complaint about?
So it's it's a bright.
Okay.
It can be um you know, an obstructed sign.
Okay.
Freezing angle, you decide and and they try and get it dealt with and they didn't.
I would like to piggyback off that if you don't mind, um you you did mention complaints, but you, does the council right now have any way of of uh uh monitoring per se or any complaints about your uh contractors? If there's, if there is any complaints about your contractors from residents, do you have any way of documenting that or keeping track of it?
Well, when there are complaints, we do have complaint forms, yes.
Okay. But besides that, that's it.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not aware of anything else that if if uh if there's a complaint of any sort, whether it's something in the ditch or some performance by one of the employees or contractors, typically that goes in on a complaint form. And if it's not addressed and is brought to our attention, then we we address it there. But typically, most complaints are handled by staff.
Sure. So just go see the city staff is what you're saying for?
That's always the start.
Conversation, if if it's the city staff that you're running into some problems with, what do you suggest then? A co- a co- a council member or yourself?
Yes, if it's a if it's a contractor, again, we've delegated responsibility to the administrator, so it always starts there.
Right.
Um if it's if it's the city staff themselves, then yes, you go.
And I understand that you have during our personal conversation, you had used the word perception and uh and I've been thinking about that a lot. Um if the perception is is there that the administrator is is speaking on behalf and and supporting the contractor per se and not really taking into consideration anything the resident is trying to say. Um what were your, what is the council's recommendations there?
The uh first of all, the administrator's job is to work with the contractors.
Sure.
In a professional manner, so um as far as how did you state it, supporting the the contractors or?
Uh correct, yeah, if you have two, if you have two different ideas, um if you have a discussion with two different ideas, in my experience, the perception that I have is uh our administrator, Mr. Lainer, would support the contractor's opinion over your opinion, which would be the resident, which would be my my opinion in my face, not only with um planner Stockman, but also with Ms. Beck. Um and I just, that that's that's where it begins to get frustrating, because as a resident, you go to the city, uh the city staff, which Minister Lainer, it's very easy to get a hold of, he always calls you back. Fantastic in that in that respect. But when when you come, when it comes down to it, you have questions about something and it's almost like your question isn't even, isn't even heard, it's no, that's what the contractor said, that's that's as good as gold. I'm thinking to myself, like, these are, these are contractors that that are employed via the city council. City council decides the contractors that that we have, and they have contracts, some don't have contracts. And if we have to live here, the residents, we have to live here in the city, the the contractors don't. Chances are good that they don't live in the city, so it would just be, it would just be ideal to get a little bit of support from the city being a resident. And I don't really need a whole lot of conversation on that topic, that's just, that's how I wanted to say. It would just be, it would be nice to get a little bit of backing from the city staff.
So let let me, let me address that and then I would like uh Mr. Lainer to address it as well. I I do think, you know, the the staff in particular in the council um on a regular basis do have interactions with our contractors and we we have done because we've hired a professional people as our contractor and there are certain obligations they have to abide by. So that's always where we start, are we abiding by ordinances and and policy that the council has set? So I don't see it as as taking their position over the resident.
Okay.
Um they're stating their understanding of the ordinance and and from their professional perspective, giving, sharing that with Mr. Lainer.
Right.
And so that's where they go, goes back to what is the documented ordinance, complaint, policy, zoning regulation? That's where it starts and that's where the consistency should be there, saying this is how things are run, so I don't see it as taking aside, there should be an explanation of of why we're going, as we said, we always won't always agree on the outcome, but we should agree that the process was good.
Sure.
And so that's the understanding is that you know, Mr. Lainer, working with the contractors, understands the process and tries to communicate that, and sometimes it will look like the process is not in favor of the resident. And that shouldn't be mistaken that he's taking a contractor side over resident's side, but he's saying this is what the ordinance says and that's, that's why we're proceeding as we are.
Sure, and I can, I can see where, I can see where you're going with this. I I don't agree with it with the with what's going on in my mind right now of a certain instances that I'm referring to, but yes, I I I see where you're coming from, absolutely.
Okay, so I would, I would like to, if Mr. Lainer has anything to say, and again, council, do you have any questions or clarification on that as well?
Scott. Sure, so I think you kind of hit on on the main things that I had in my head here, but when it comes to Sam, your situation specifically, we've had numerous conversations and and uh my intent was never for you to feel like you weren't being heard. Um matter of fact, there are notes in of our conversations and when you've brought up things that I didn't know the answers to, typically my next phone call is to Liz and having Liz, you know, how did this pertain, or how did that conversation, that go? Uh never to to discredit anything that you brought up, but there were some things that you asked from time to time that I didn't have the answer to until I went back and took a look at it, so um you know, the things that you brought up and the and the things that we covered, uh sometimes I needed to go back to this, but uh I wasn't picking one of the other.
Right, if I can bring up one, one specific instance that that comes to mind is um a year ago and you you yourself came out to my property for the code compliance issue. Um we had talked before that meeting, before that took place, you and I had talked, Mayor and I had talked.
Mm-hmm.
And I had asked for something very simple and it was, I I I couldn't believe how difficult it was to to get it, but it was pretty simple. What I had asked for was a detailed description of what you guys were looking for on my property. Because whoever put the complaint in, they had listed that I had items stored on my property. You had told me that you would get with Liz and you would find out what exactly items that we were going to come look for.
Mm-hmm.
And that was days, and I I even remember, I sent the mayor an email that day and I said, look, it's it's, I don't know what day it was, let's call it fifteen, it's the fifteen. And they're coming out, still don't have an idea of what we're looking for. And it's just, you're just gonna let it happen, so in that instance, I would say that you didn't really stick up for the resident. Um a little bit of clarification will go a long way, it it really wouldn't.
Mr. Mayor.
Chris Scott.
Yeah, part of what Mr. Corns is referring to is like he said, the complaint was fairly general um about items stored on the property, we have since had a discussion about that at council level and have agreed to um be a little more inquisitive of the complaints to try to get specifics about what may be bothering them about, you know, a neighbor or somebody downstream or whatever. Um but our ordinance also allows us to send a notice or a letter to properties that suspected violations. So for properties that you are unable to completely see from the road, we only, you know, our first contact is that letter, so what happens is um or what happened in Mr. Corn's case too is that um we basically tried to cover all our bases, in other words, outdoor um storage, um you know, the vehicle. Uh we tried to take the regulations in our ordinance and list those, there were probably five or six things on his letter and and at the forefront, um yeah, we did not know what he had exactly, and what we spoke about by email was the fact that part of the site inspection is either validating or not validating what the complaint did.
When you have to have something to validate though? So it's a blanket, it's a, it's a blanket, we're just gonna come out and look for every single thing that could be an infraction? See, the city code compliance or the city code um complaints in the city of Mountain are complaint, complaint driven, as I understand, which you don't really have an issue unless somebody complains and I I agree with that. So if somebody's gonna complain about having an item stored on my property, what item are you complaining about, what item would you like investigate, what item would you like seeing uh seeing something happen? I don't, I I I really don't agree that there's a blanket statement, if 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 all you have to do is just put in, you know, you got something stored on your property, then you got free wind to go and walk all the way through that property and find every single infraction that that person has, I don't, I don't agree with that one bit.
And and we also, and we we addressed this last year because we didn't agree with that concept.
Correct.
Um and that's why we have tightened that up to be more specific.
But you did still come out that day and they still did look for every single thing on that list, semi trucks, dumpsters, roll off boxes. Everything that was on that list got got looked for and we didn't have a single item that we were, that we were looking for, so. And you were involved, Mr. Mayor, you were involved with that process before they came up to the, before they came on, walked on the property, which I'm grateful for because I think you gave really good insight, but nothing ever happened, it still came out. Still came out, still walked around, it didn't matter that it was just a blanket statement, a simple phone call to the to the person who made the complaint and say, hey, look, you wrote items down, what exactly are you looking for? Again, it's something that was, that was, that was incredibly simple, but yet so difficult.
Right, so 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 let me say that, again, we we address that as a council and items is not sufficient to go hunting.
Right.
Um we've also instituted part of, part of this challenge was we were in the middle of transition. You know, as as I recall, this happened in I um when this first came up.
I'm sure.
Liz, you were on vacation shortly after that. Um by the time it was coming to the council attention, Frank was leaving, Scott was coming in, we were in the middle of this baton handoff, so it was a bit clumsy to begin with. Items is obviously very uh general and generic.
Right.
It does sound like a hunting expedition, which we addressed at that time, and so we had asked, you know, when complaints come in now, that first of all, they're specific and that we make sure Mr. Lainer's involved upfront.
Right.
So that we can try and head them off before they get into this process moving down the road uh through the complaint process. Councilmember Ringo.
Um and going through documentation, as I agree that that conversation and change in policy occurred in October twenty-two. So it was after this.
Right.
So we can't make our new policy and make it look proactive to what was happening in July nine. We did address it, we may change in October, so going forward from then, we have a new policy.
I'm sorry.
Just to add briefly that, you know, there are times when um let's say a neighbor thinks two cars stored outside is a problem where, you know, but I can't see what's going on, so I still may have to include that in the letter. Um and I get out there and I validate the complaint or not in this case, wouldn't be validated because two cars are allowed outside. So there are cases when we pass the catch the regulation that may be suspected and that is allowed by ordinance. And just because you get a letter doesn't mean you're guilty. That should be clear too, I mean, that is our first form of contact with residents. And we, city attorneys have re- have recommended that, you know, we send a letter always to the tax address and only to that address unless there may be an owner living off-site and a tenant situation, then both would get a letter. But, you know, calling people and doing anything differently is not recommended, that's not what's stated in our ordinance.
Is the ordinance though list items? I mean, I understand, you know, the the truck and you know, the the ordinance lists examples of of things.
Mm-hmm.
And so as Sam was saying, because there was a list of things in the ordinance, you went out there, you had, there's obviously no twenty thousand pound carts, there's no containers, there's there's nothing that might be listed in the ordinance. I think probably more concerning was the fact that it was items.
Well.
Right, specified items and that, that means you're looking for where where I've seen the letters and it says, the ordinance says, these types of things are allowed. So that's pretty clear because you're quoting the ordinance, but I think the idea was, we're not sure what we're looking for, but we'll know if we see it. And that's the concern, nobody wants to say um come on out, see if you can find something.
And that's not like we were, you know, opening doors of the shed and looking under.
No, but I'm just saying, the clarification is the ordinance does specifically state items. And that's the concern because the letter said items. And we have, as Councilmember Ringo said, we've cleaned that up.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh Councilmember Ringo.
The the letter that went out to Corns is the following items are suspected violation. Nothing was saying they were, it was a suspected violation based on the complaint and what is listed in our ordinance and she provided some examples of different things that could be violation. It doesn't say that there is, it doesn't say that there isn't. Um it just, it's that notification of a potential violation, let's have a conversation and let's see if we can end it right here.
And that's the letter, and I think the concern was the complaint, they said, just said items.
I I get that, I get that.
Yeah, but Mr. Mayor, kind of the blocks that are here, I mean, high level, a letter came in with, that was pretty generic. We agreed that the process should be improved, we made a process improvement. It went through in October of twenty-twenty-two and our revised process is, something generic comes in, Scott's gonna follow up and says, hey, or we can't go, there's lots of stuff in there, like, what is it specifically that is the base of your complaint, and ideally this stuff would happen between the two neighbors, so we don't have to be the freaking referee of this because it's ridiculous that two neighbors can't say, can you get your uh dump truck out of the front of the yard so I can look at it, or whatever it is, because it's not aligned with what we think we want now, so, I mean, ideally that could have happened first. A letter came in, we probably didn't do as good a job because we don't do this every day, but we have changed the policy and I think we should be at a point where, here's what it is now, we're moving forward, do we think that's gonna solve it going forward, and if we all agree we think it's gonna solve it going forward, let's move on.
Mayor. Yeah, Clark.
Oh, okay. Uh let's see, um. So I was talking with Councilmember Bryant on the phone a couple weeks back and we had talked briefly about the city council, it doesn't necessarily know every single thing that's happening in the city of Mountain. That's a brief fact, and nobody would really expect in the council, you know, every single thing that goes on in the city of Mountain, how could it be? Uh a lot of that falls on the administration, which would be the administrator and the city staff and they would have to basically brief the council, I'm assuming on, you you probably have monthly reports or quarterly reports or something to give you an idea of what's going on in the city of Mountain. Um as, were you briefed at all on on this, on the uh the other complaint that that we might be talking about in a little bit here, was the council briefed on on all the difficulties through this uh pumping of the septic system and the V N R wetlands? Were you guys briefed on that at all from the cities, from the city staff, even if it happened a a year prior?
I have had one side of it that I've been able to look at, I haven't had both sides, so.
Sure.
And I wasn't here a year ago, so I didn't get briefed a year ago. You're asking if you got briefed a year ago.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying specifically a year ago, but it it had been, it had been dragging on and dragging on and dragging on, I think. I think the the city believes that result had had been somewhere around, I don't know, May or June of this year.
I have some notes from something to do with the septic, whether it's the issue you're referring to or not, I have no idea.
Sure, and the only, the only reason why I ask the question is if the city, if, like you say, you're not supposed to know everything that goes on in the city, but wha- what do you do in the instance that you that you don't know and nobody tells you? Which would be the conversation that a resident like myself could have with the council. I'm gonna clarify that a little bit here, um. Mr. Lainer and I have been going back and forth for a long time, I've been trying to follow up because nothing had happened, nothing had happened, nothing had happened, nothing had happened. And, okay, finally, somebody has to know something, somebody has to have an answer, because it 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 wasn't handled like they told me, like they told anybody it was gonna be handled. So maybe the city council knows something about it, because the city council is the end-all of decisions in the city. They they will come together and unanimously make a decision, I believe. So if the city council didn't know anything about it, nothing can really be done, we're just stuck in this vicious cycle of nothing's gonna take place, nothing's gonna happen. So then a a resident such as myself would go up to the city and say, hey, I I'd like to have a conversation about this, could I bend your ear on it? I understand that nothing's gonna get done per se, I understand there's not gonna be a result, but we can at least talk about it, just so more or less you're aware of it. You know, you're aware that there could be something going on in the city that you don't know about and could use your attention. Um there's also possibly an amendment to the the building regulation, maybe not, um I'd like to talk to you about that in a minute. But.
Let's go back before we get off on that subject, and uh again, generally, things are going to come to the council level if they're not satisfactory results.
Sure.
If there's progress being made, and sometimes even when it comes to the council level, when there's going to be declines, there's going to be further action, it's gonna give legal action, those things come, obviously come to the council, you have to optimize. And so when they do come up, uh there's an opportunity for the and the party that that is subjected to the action to demonstrate that they're, they've cleaned it up, they've corrected whatever. But generally, if there's cooperation between, sometimes it takes a while, because there's cooperation going on between the original complaint and the elimination of the problem.
Right.
As long as they're seeing progress, they generally don't bring that to the council. We do have a summary sheet that we've had in the past where there are code compliance issues that the council will see to see some of these progress on some of these things. But if there's progress being made, generally it doesn't come yet, it's when progress stops or people aren't responding, that's when staff bring it to the council's attention and eventually it, it gets to the point where there's a fine, they come to us, approve the fine. They come to us, approve the fine, and if it doesn't, it's time to to assess the tax.
Well, the council would notify about a fine being sent out earlier this year.
Not each individual site.
Where where, if they aren't responding to the fine.
Okay.
That's when we.
I'm with you, alright.
So if fines are allowed, no.
Okay.
People are are not responding to it, that typically comes to the council's attention.
If you don't respond to a a code compliance. Request, I don't know what you're gonna call it, you don't respond to the a code, a code compliance complaint. Uh, is is there a possibility that you could get fined from the city, just from your non, non response to a resident?
Yes.
Uh, what, what would happen if the resident just says no?
If 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 the resident says no.
Yeah.
To what?
To the, to the, well, let's, let's say you, there's a complaint on my property. I'm gonna talk to Liz and I just say, no.
Let's say, uh, imagine it's a, the, the twenty thousand pound truck.
Right.
Exactly, choose not to move. Yeah, that would be something where you'd be instructed over the ordinance, you'd be given an opportunity to. To remedy it, and you say, I'm not going to, then yes, that would would elevate to a fine, and if the fine wasn't paid, try to be assessed to your taxes.
Okay, I was just curious.
It 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 doesn't happen, for for all complaints that are out there, most people are just unaware of this thing. I wasn't aware of this, and now ultimately, that's, that's why we don't hear about a lot of them.
Sure.
Because when they hit that first letter, it's like, sorry, I didn't know about this, I'll I'll take care of it. Uh, sometimes people decide not to do that, and proceeds down through a series of layers and eventually ends up with Mr. Glazer.
Okay, Councilmember Ryan, to add to that. The the, if if you think about it, the the, if you're on the board of directors of a major Fortune five hundred company. You have no idea what what is going on at the the lower management and employee level. As long as everything's going smooth, you don't need to know all that stuff going on. We don't need to know everything that staff is doing to, from the the example I used. So Joe's getting gas and it's three fifty nine a gallon or whatever, that's being taken care of, we don't need to know every little detail about that.
Right.
I've seen the list of complaints, the complaints are getting addressed, I don't need to know of it, but I know for sure. If anything's gonna be escalated, Scott's gonna let the council know, hey. We're gonna have this, this, just bringing this to your attention in the updates.
And we do get those updates. So, so you know.
And if, and if, and if someone called the board of directors, I would not expect the board of directors to override. The the chain of command, so to speak, and go directly to the employee and go, you have to go do this. One would do the, do some investigation and and talk to. Um, the next level to find out what's going on and let you know, hey, I'm just curious how this goes.
Sure.
That's why, that's why their, their work, that's why they're in the positions they're in.
Right.
Is that fair?
Oh, absolutely, that's fair, well, definitely, but in the rare instance that that, let's just say things get a little out of hand, let's say they get. They, nothing goes right, everything just turns into quicksand, every move you make, you just get deeper and deeper, nothing goes right. At at what point does the council get involved?
When the council needs to be involved.
And how does the council know that they need to be involved?
Well, if if a resident, if someone talked to me and said, hey, what's, I'm having this big problem, my first connection is going to be go to Scott, hey, what's going on?
Sure.
What, you know, is this being, being resolved, this is being worked on, and Scott goes, whatever, oh, yeah, this is working on that. There's some delays, we're working through all that, everything so far is going well. Just as an example.
Right, well, then, yeah, that that exact thing has been taking place, and my go to person was Mr. Pilon because. I felt that we had really good conversations, we uh, we understood each other's. We understood each other pretty well, and that was going on because we were running into what's. Why is this not happening, why is this not happening, this was said to be happening, but it's not happening and. And went to Mr. Pilon and. And uh, he went to Scott and everything back and forth, and finally I just said, I gotta go and see the city council because this is. Something's gotta, something's gotta, somebody's gotta answer a question, I suppose, no, but the amount of I don't knows that that took place are just, it's it's frustrating. So, um.
So again, just, just to to clarify, I would say. As you said, sometimes things get out of whack and escalate.
Sure.
Um, from our experience, is majority of time they don't.
Okay.
And so, we're, we're looking at the exception to the rule rather than the rule.
Right.
And so in our, our experience is when somebody does bring something to our attention, and we bring that back to the staff's attention. And I would say the majority of time when a resident gets to the point where they're called in one of us. And we bring it to the staff's attention, it's resolved relatively quickly, there was a misunderstanding. We get those parties together, clarify the the understanding, and they work well together, and I can give you numerous examples of that happening. In the years I've been on the council, so that's really the norm. And what we're dealing here with an exception to the rule, and that's why we're trying not to be overreacting. Though it's a big, uh, challenge from your point of view. Because you're the one involved in something that isn't going normally. And you're, you know, you're understanding things, but in our role, it normally does, the norm is. If it's brought to our attention, we bring it up and staff rectifies it without a critical thinking. This one's a little complicated. Because the length of time and the number of different concerns that were raised. And the one in particular that you're raising now, the length of time it took to get resolved.
Well, not only that, I think, I think part of the reason why I'm frustrated is if none of it was, none of it happened, uh, in the manner that it happened with with myself. With me on my property. In the same complaint, very similar, but very similar to an extent. Uh, we had the Anoka County Water and Soil Conservation District come out to my property during our little walkthrough. And uh, we wanted to make sure that where I was splitting firewood was okay, and we're making sure that a little. Bridge that I put up over a dry creek that was was okay, because whoever put this complaint into my property. Maybe there's complaints regarding um, the area of wetland, and in the state of Minnesota, an area of wetland is very. It's very sensitive, so everything that's done anywhere near a wetland has to be very, has to be done very cautiously. And has to be done with, with good intent. So. When the city calls somebody like the Anoka County Soil and Water, the Water and Soil Conservation to come out and approve or not approve of of what I was doing on my property. But none of which was, none, none of this was done for this other property, and there's a lot of questions that I have about that.
I guess it's maybe a question, it's in a different language. I make a complaint about my neighbor or the guy down the road. And provide the information that I have. And I send it to the city, at what point am I no longer part of that complaint? Am I supposed to be um, included in all conversations, all documentation, all? Um, actions until it's resolved? The complaint is not against me. I should be giving it to the professionals and allowing the professionals to deal with that complaint. And not every complaint is sustained, not every complaint can get taken care of in two weeks. Not every complaint comes to resolution, and then in the end, it runs through the whole administrative enforcement process. And you're involved. Um, but your, your questions, Mr. Corns, are are key. Where, where do you? Where are, how are you allowed to be involved in this complaint that is not to your property? That's, I I'm just having a really hard time on that.
Sure, follow, follow up on that, follow up on complaints isn't allowed?
You can have either the general information about it. And I'm assuming staff provided that, but I will let Mr. Glazer answer that.
You know, very often, you know, two complaints are exactly the same. And often, some complaints are private, and some of them involve private data. So conceptually, um, I think the way the council member stated it is correct, is that. Usually it's, it's up to the professionals at the city.
Right.
To handle those complaints, and to give feedback whenever they think that's appropriate.
True.
You know, and so like I said, since there, there's such a difference in the type of complaints that we get. That there's no simple answer to that question, and especially when the MPCA or. Um, we're talking about a wetland again, all the, the city needs to consult with their department. So. It it's a little bit on the professional judgment of that individual of the city. And to give feedback when it's appropriate.
So. Picking back enough of that, if if you talk to the city, they give you the update, they say that, okay, we talked to the DNR, the DNR said they, they would not come out. Unless we get hard evidence. When you call the DNR, being the the resident, you say, is that right? You you said, you told our city that that you would not come out, I said, we never got this phone call, that never took place. So I see where you're coming from, and I see where you're coming from. Councilmember Ray Bill, but but at the same time, if if the checks and balances that. Everybody holds near and dear aren't checked and balanced. Am I just supposed to, you know, oh, it's all for the professionals, everything is handed. But then the one time somebody follows up on it and it turns out that nothing was handled appropriately, or like they, like they had initially said they would. Um. I I I find that a little bit different, a little bit difficult.
So, so. I'll let staff and Mr. Ray. What I want to be careful of saying is is. Um, use qualifiers where you can, as you said, it wasn't handled appropriately, and we don't know how it was handled and what.
Okay, understood.
But what, wasn't, it didn't appear to be followed through in the way you would expect.
Right.
And there, you talked to somebody at the DNR, you said?
Uh, yes.
The DNR, and they, they hadn't received. A question, a concern from the staff, so I'm gonna start with Mr. Glazer. And your responses.
I just wanted to tell us all, remind us that we have in this state, it's called the Minnesota Data Prax Act. And one of the tenets of the act is when the, the complaints are under investigation. They are privately, they're not available to the public, so if you call the DNR. The DNR told you about a complaint that is open in process, that would be a violation of that law. So I I, it would not surprise me that if you were to just simply call the DNR and ask them about an investigation, they would say, and we should say. We can't talk to you about that if it's an open complaint, and it's the same thing for Scottman and for me, and for our police department, the sheriff's department is involved. So that's a general rule, it would not surprise me that you would have gotten some kind of response like we did. They shouldn't tell you that there's no. Thank you.
Your man.
There's Scott.
So, at some point, um. Scott relies on me and the other consultants to use our provisional judgment. And the DNR was not the appropriate party to call for a complaint. Regarding uh, pumping of a septic system, um, the, into a wetland. Um, I was on the property, there was no evidence that there was a hose. Leading to a wetland or anywhere outside of a tank. Um, I walked the property with the owner. Uh, so, we correct, so the city adopts. The MPCA regulations, which are the septic system rules.
Right.
And accepts that responsibility as the enforcing burden. So, I did call the MPCA. And word grits got there on the best. Uh, action. Um, you know, we, we had no proof of this, and the, like I said, I was on the site. Um, pumping from a tank would have been very obvious. Uh, the McCormick's tank lids are actually buried, two out of three. And so they would have had to, you know, dig or. Obtain access to that, a hose would have been very evident.
So then where did it come out that the DNR wouldn't come out if there wasn't hard proof?
Don't know, DNR was.
And from the get-go, you told me that Minspect is supposed to be handling that.
Well, Minspect only handles the cases pertaining to the construction of that septic system and any detailed. Um. You know, uh, I guess. Like, for instance. If if anything is not visible.
Right.
For instance, a broken tank or a.
Because Minspect even hired or even lined up Midwest Sewer to come on and do the inspection.
No, no, I was working directly with Chris at Midwest Sewer.
Okay.
So Chris, Chris is what, from Midwest Sewer, is he?
Yeah, Midwest Sewer is a consultant with Minspect.
But if we go back to the process, because we should get into who's inspecting someone else's tank based off of a. Neighbor that is complaining.
Correct.
It should be, the process is, a complaint was filed, we followed the same process. We sent our planner out there to investigate it, they investigated it, the report back was, there are no. Violations that are obvious to see. We closed the case. And we moved on.
Yeah, well, we went even further in this case, we asked them, we asked the owner to pump. Um, their tanks because it hasn't been pumped in ten years, so.
I understand that, but it's like. You're asking for, what is the process? We followed the process, we came to a result, there is data privacy act, so. The fact that you're asking when the neighbors are pumping their tanks is crazy. So I'm trying to understand, like, what do you want us to do? Because it feels like we did, we followed the same process that we went with other residents that have a. And I, actually, I don't want a response, because I wanna move on, because we followed the process.
In her city code, how many, how many years are supposed to be between a a septic pump?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't, so why is it in city code if it doesn't matter?
Is your responsibility to maintain your septic systems, if you have problems with it?
Why is it in the city code if it doesn't matter?
Okay, it wasn't your complaint, Mr. Farm. It wasn't written on a complaint form.
Okay.
And, and, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Bill.
And your complaint was, is as vague as what you are upset about on the complaint.
My complaint is vague, really?
It wasn't approved, I did see it, one, one person's talking at the time.
So I I wanna kind of wrap this up because I feel like we're back into the. He said, he said, he said, and we went through the process. We have a trained staff to do this, we rely on their expertise. We have a lawyer here saying we have data privacy, so you may or may not get an update to your liking at all times. And we're probably not gonna debate how long it should take to pump a tank or how many years in between it should be, so. I'm trying to understand, like, how do you move on, Mr., what's the next step?
I guess you're okay with it, I guess that's the next step.
I guess if we send our team out there and they say, they come back and say, I don't see any issues. And they're our team that we rely on, and they have the education and the experience to do this. I'm probably gonna say, I buy that.
Mr. Mayor.
There's Scott.
And just for councils and Mr. Corns sake, there's, the city, a city is not required to enforce their ordinance. Most of the time, we, well, we operate on a complaint basis, which we've already stated. Um, but, um, Councilmember Alders is correct, is stating that. At some point, if we use our judgment, and we decide this is resolved to the extent. Um, and secondly. You know, it's, well, there may or may not be, there may or may not be dozens of the violations out there. In fact, I know there are, but because complaints aren't. In fact, I know there are, but because complaints aren't received, you know, we don't look into them, because even that's a policy.
And again, we want to get to a system where, like, our neighbors are talking to one another, saying, hey, can you do this differently? Or what's going on here, so it doesn't have to come to the city council, trying to be referee or. Who's got what in their backyard?
So this went from a. Health issue to be pumping your septic system at the D N R.
This is allegedly.
Okay.
This is your perception of.
Right.
The thought was going on.
Right.
We simply is out there.
So this is, so this goes from allegedly to a neighbor dispute, just like that?
Uh, so, you're the one that had the complaint, we acted on the complaint. We used our professional and her judgment, and we closed the complaint. You're obviously not happy with that result, and you've been.
It's not the result, it's the process.
It's the same process that happened to you, someone filed a complaint, Liz came out, there were some violations. We've since changed that so that we can be more specific, your complaint to the resident or that came in was specific about septic. We investigated that.
With a septic expert?
So, again, we have someone that's trained on our city code.
She's trained in S S B I? Exactly.
Alright, so. Mister Mayor, do you wanna argue, or do you wanna understand what the process is?
I.
Cause we can do both, I'm just telling you, she is our code enforcement person that was. Called out there to investigate someone pumping a septic with a sump pump and a hose coming out of the top of the tanks. That wasn't there.
Mister Lainer, so one, one additional thing I'd like to add to that, too, it's, it's on top of everything Councilmember Alders is talking about, and uh. And what Liz was able to do when she went out there to do the walkthrough, is that, uh, I worked with, uh. The said party, and we, they ended up coordinating with a third party septic system. That has nothing to do with the city from outside the city, came out and certified it and checked for everything that was out there, and we got certification, they pumped the system. And there was no issues with the septic system, even on top of everything else that we talked about. I don't want that lost in the conversation.
And I, I think, Sam, to your point that, that the, the complaint being, uh, pumping. And you would have to be a septic system professional to see if there was a hose. If there was some pumping going on, and as Liz indicated, you would have to dig the ground to get to the tanks. So, it's, it's, it's not an inspection of the tanks and the system as much as. The concern that was expressed that there's hoses pumping into a.
Okay.
And that, in in the same respect, when staff went came out to your place and said, yeah, none of this is true, you're fine. They went out there and said, we don't see evidence of, of that.
The only difference is they brought the Anoka County Water and Soil people with, because they're subject matter experts in the area. No subject matter experts in the area came up to that property, if I'm, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Again.
Because I don't think Planner Stockman's a subject matter expert in that area, she can look at the ground and see that there's a rock there, sure, but.
And and you wouldn't need to be a subject matter expert to see a hose or a pump or open tank.
Oh, okay.
And I mean, that, that's significant difference from checking a septic system to. The tanks are open and it looks like somebody was doing something.
Right.
And I don't know when the system was pumped and what else to get there. Those people are subject matter experts, and they would have, if there was a failed, that's, that would have been their obligation to tell us, and the home.
All right, that's it, I appreciate it, went exactly where I thought it was gonna go. I appreciate the conversation, thank you for your time, and you're coming here at one day at a five, that's wonderful. Anything else for me?
Um. Do you have anything else for us, I mean, that's?
No, I appreciate it. Uh, to clarify though, is there, I I know there might have been talk about. Quarterly or or what have you about issues that residents could potentially come up to a meeting or. Hold an individual workshop, that they might be able to ask, ask a couple of questions to the council, is that, is that a possibility still or no?
That's certainly not something the council has resolved. But Mister Mayor, if there was something, it would be, and that would be addressed at a council meeting, it would be, be listed on the agenda, that'd be correct?
It is correct.
Wonderful, well.
Thank you. Mister Mayor. There's no other business in front of the council, I think. Martha the second, or Jerry.